Good. We'll be fine. Good evening, everybody. You know, we haven't gotten to you yet. I've asked Nathan Boyd tonight to come give the invocation. Nathan is with Church at the Grove. He actually has one of his very, very important people in his congregation that actually works for us. So I've asked Caitlin to have him come in for us and he's graciously accepted. So if you would take the floor, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you guys for having me and I'd love to pray for us. Lord Jesus, we thank you so much for just your many blessings that you've given to us, Lord, and we thank you that we get to live in great communities here in Walton County, but, Lord, here in Monroe in particular. Lord, we thank you for just the men and the women that serve this city so faithfully, day in and day out. And, Lord, we know that oftentimes it's a thankless job and they don't get the recognition that they deserve. And so, Lord, we thank you for just their dedication and their service to the community, but also to you. And, Lord, we just pray that tonight, Lord, as they do the city's business, Lord, I pray that you would give them the wisdom and the guidance that they need to be able to make the right decisions for this community and for the citizens represented here. But we pray for just your richest blessings upon Monroe. Lord, as you've used and just done incredible things over the years and decades here in Monroe, Lord, we just pray for continued blessings on this community as you work and move in our midst. Lord, we love you and we thank you again for tonight. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Nathan. Thank you so much. Nathan is turning around Social Circle, too. He's on the City Council there. So I appreciate your taking the time out and come see us. Now, I'm going to call this meeting to order and let the record reflect that all members of council are present. With an empty chair, but Chaz is upstairs having his picture taken, so he'll be down in just a couple of seconds. Thank you, Chris. Need a motion for the approval of the agenda, please?
I'll move, Mr. Mayor.
Sir? I have a motion? Wait, 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 wait. I need a second first. Do you have a second? Second, Ms. Sams. Now on the discussion.
I'd like just to ask that, as we normally do, move the appointment of City Attorney to executive session.
Can...I don't know. Can we do that? Okay. Okay, moving the appointment of the City Attorney to executive session. So what we will do is move that from...what number is it?
A, 1A.
From New Business 1A. Can we do that after executive session when we come back?
We'll have to add the executive session.
You'll just need to add an executive session at the end of district items. A new item number six and seven would be adjourned and then it would be executive session for personnel.
Executive session for personnel. Okay. So moving it from New Business 1A to executive session for personnel. That being said, is...I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the approval of the consent agenda. This is the council minutes from March, executive session minutes from March. February Planning Commission, DDA, and Convention and Visitors Bureau. I need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, please.
I'll move, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Brown. Is there any discussion? You're not all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Tonight, we have a few things in our public forum. First, we have Child Abuse Prevention Month. And... That's Lauren. The Child's Voice. I wore my pin, by the way.
I'm so glad. I see a couple of them. Thank you all so much.
I'm going to read it first and then let you talk for a second. Is that okay? Okay. This proclamation for the City of Monroe, Georgia, Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas children are our most valuable resource and they are also our most vulnerable, all of Georgia's children have a right to be safe and an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow in an environment that fosters healthy development. And whereas child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening Georgia's families, thus preventing the far-reaching effects of maltreatment and providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusting family bonds and consequently building the foundations of communities. Whereas positive childhood experiences, like loving caregivers and safe, stable, nurturing relationships, can help mitigate trauma and the negative impact of adverse childhood experiences to promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created within communities among citizens, human services agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business sector, inspiring action from expected and unexpected partners in prevention. And whereas providing a safe, stable, and nurturing environment for our children, free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can assure, ensure, that Georgia's children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders helping to secure the future of this state and nation. Now therefore, I, John S. Howard, Mayor of the City of Monroe, do hereby proclaim April 2024 is Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Monroe, Georgia. In witness where have I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of the City of Monroe, Georgia, this ninth day of April 2024.
Thank you. It's actually shorter this year.
Okay, that really wasn't so bad. Thank you for coming in. I saw that we have...
Yes. So thank you so much for having me, all of you. This is not the first time I've been here. Hopefully, it's not the last. I did give you a packet of information, some updates about our center and what we've done this year, and just some general information for all of you to have. I know some of you are new, so you'll get my spiel, but my name is Lauren Gregory and I'm with the Child's Voice Child Advocacy Center. We're a nonprofit and Social Circle and we work to make sure that kids are heard, supported, and protected after instances of abuse in Newton and Walton Counties. So we serve kids from Monroe. We see about 300 kids a year total between the two counties. But really, we do all the intervention services that's partnered with law enforcement and DFACS, but what we're celebrating this month is that April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and that's where we celebrate the safe, healthy, happy childhoods that all children deserve and we know is possible. So you've got some tips in there about how to protect kids in your life, which everybody can do this month. Just check on a kid they know, make sure they're doing okay, let them know that you're a safe adult you can talk to if, you know, something's going on. And then take kids seriously, believe them. If they tell you something's happened to them, they're probably not lying. If they are, we figure it out pretty quick and there's normally some underlying reason. So always, when in doubt, believe a child. But I want to thank you all so much for your support, the Monroe Police Department, our fantastic partners with us, our pinwheels this year at the Historic Courthouse, which I understand you all share that corner. So thank you for letting us have our banner there and our pinwheels there. And just all the ways you support people in the community to have the safe, healthy, happy childhoods that they deserve because it's a great place to grow up. So I'm grateful that I get to raise my family here. My little guy's gone because, you know, he's loud. He's here somewhere, but he's supervised, don't worry.
Well...
Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions for Lauren? We know you. We appreciate you. You take care of Tyler.
Thank you.
And Miller. Would you like to introduce your team?
So I have just one here today. Jennifer Daniel. She's with me. She's a forensic interviewer, so she...her job is to interview kids when they come to our center about the allegations of abuse that have brought them here. So she gets to sit in the room with the child and give them that safe place to talk, get all the details that then law enforcement and DFACS use to continue their investigation. She does a great job. She just celebrated five years with us.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Stop, we're going to have to take a picture. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Next, this proclamation for the City of Monroe, Georgia, is for Limb Loss and Limb Difference Awareness Month. Whereas there are more than 5.6 million individuals living with limb loss and limb difference in the United States, whereas more than 2.1 million individuals live with a form of limb loss and more than 3.4 million were born with a form of limb difference, whereas each year, over 500,000 individuals in the United States experience limb loss or are born with limb difference. Whereas diabetes, peripheral vascular disease, trauma and cancer are cited as the leading causes of amputation with approximately 90% of cases being contributed to them. Whereas studies have shown that behaviors such as diabetes management, properly treating wounds, and observing safety practices can be effective in preventing amputations. Whereas access to appropriate prosthetics care for people living with limb loss or limb difference is vital to enable individuals to reach their full potential, remain physically active, live independently, and live well. Whereas the Amputee Coalition provides education, support, and advocacy through the National Limb Loss Resource Center for the benefit of persons who have limb loss and limb difference, their families, and healthcare providers throughout the United States. And whereas April is an appropriate month to designate the Limb Loss and Limb Difference Awareness Month, as spring is a time of renewal and inspiration, now therefore, I, John Howard, Mayor of City of Monroe, Georgia, do hereby proclaim April 1st through 30th, 2024, is Limb Loss and Limb Difference Awareness Month in the City of Monroe, Georgia, and encourage all residents to join in recognizing the importance of this month by celebrating people living with limb loss and limb difference, learning about issues affecting people with limb loss or limb difference, expressing gratitude to family and caregivers who are a source of support and motivation, and saluting our veterans who have lost their limbs in service to our country or in retirement. In testimony where have I hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of the City of Monroe, Georgia, this ninth day of April 2024. Did I see Mary Ann here? I'll tell you the person who introduced me to this is...her name's Mary Ann Lyle. She and her husband Jeff used to own Macklin's Bakery, which was right downtown. Outstanding, outstanding food, outstanding people. Mary Ann lost her leg last year, chose to have it amputated. And I said, "What do you mean you chose to have it amputated? The choice was between having one leg and having no life." So she is...she has a prosthetic and was telling me all that she had to go through. And if you ever need any more information about that, I can put you with her. Next, proclamation for the City of Monroe, Georgia, is World Autism Month, April 2024. So I've asked the team from the Bridge School to come join us and give us a little presentation. I'll read the proclamation first. Whereas autism spectrum disorder affects an estimated 1 in 54 United States children and 1 in 54 United States adults, and is a complex condition that affects each person differently resulting in unique strengths and challenges. And whereas autism can cause challenges with verbal and nonverbal communication, social interaction, and repetitive behaviors, it can affect anyone regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or socioeconomic background. And whereas autism is often accompanied by medical conditions that impact quality of life, and whereas a comprehensive collaborative approach will help to advance research, providing a better understanding of the many forms of autism while strengthening the advocacy efforts and ensuring access to services and resources throughout the lifespan. And whereas early diagnosis and intervention tailored to individual needs can have lifelong benefits, easing the transition to adulthood and fostering greater independence. And whereas each person and family affected by autism should have access to reliable information and supports, and whereas autistic people should have opportunities to reach their greatest potential and the whole of society stands to benefit from this. And whereas Monroe, Georgia, is honored to take part in the annual observance of World Autism Month and World Autism Awareness Day to address the diverse needs of individuals with autism and their families. Now therefore, I, John S. Howard, by virtue of the authority vested in me, as Mayor of the City of Monroe, Georgia, do hereby proclaim April 2024 is World Autism Month and April 2nd, 2024, is World Autism Awareness Day in Monroe, Georgia, to create a kinder, gentler, more inclusive world for people with autism spectrum disorder. In testimony where have I have hereunto set my hand and cause the great seal of the seal of the great city of the City of Monroe, Georgia, this ninth day of April 2024. John S. Howard. Thank you. Folks, you may know Tammy Burt and you know Molly Misselli. She came in with Fire Department a few weeks...months ago. I think she's their mascot. Tammy...Tammy has this huge heart and has built the Bridge School and the former Monroe Primary School. And you have how many kids right now? And you're starting to do some adults next year? That's the plan? Okay. You want to go...you want to tell us? You want to come get this first? The Tiger Cafe does breakfast on Friday mornings, 8 till 9. And I think a couple of you have gone with me. So what are you going to tell us?
Well, thank you for having us here tonight. We always like to share a little bit about the Bridge. For about 15 years, I was directing camps for children with special needs and one camp each summer specifically for kids on the autism spectrum. Those camps and Stone Soup, which is a ministry of Faith Baptist Church. But at the end of camp, we have a family day and parents would continuously come to us on that day and say, "My child was the most successful this week that they've ever been. Have you thought about doing something all year round?" And we wanted to, but those kids came almost entirely through scholarships and we couldn't figure out...we put pencil to paper so many times trying to figure out how we could make it affordable to those families. We didn't even want to create something that the very families that asked for it couldn't access. So after a lot of research, we found out about the Georgia Special Need Scholarship Program. And that allows students that have an IEP in public school, if there's another setting that's more effective at meeting their specific needs, then we can...they can take that money and go to that school and apply it toward their scholarship. So we began looking for a place and my partners and I had some business consultants come in and they said, "This is a great plan, but you absolutely shouldn't do it in Monroe, Georgia. You need to go to Athens or Atlanta." But our heart was for these families here that had to ask for this to happen and our heart was for Monroe, Georgia. So we moved forward against what they told us and in the fall of 2012, we acquired the building at 109 Plain Street. And it had been a school and it was...it had everything. It had all the desks and, you know, shelves in the library and so we were really excited to get started. So with the support of both the superintendent and the director of exceptional students in Walton County School District, we started moving forward to get in the building. On January 25th, we...of 2013, we received our business license and eager to get started, we opened our doors on the 28th of January. We knew that our kids couldn't access that scholarship money until we were accredited and we knew there was time that it took to get accredited and so we weren't going to wait till September to get started. We...we were not business people largely. We were people that worked with children with autism and so we got frustrated with the red tape and the roadblocks of starting a new business with very little money. And that's where this council became...he rose in our story because I went home one night, wrote to all the city council members and the mayor and the city planner, and the next day they were at my office and they helped walk us through some of these roadblocks and removed some of the financial barriers that were making it difficult for us to get started. Today, we have 75 students. When we opened our doors, we opened to five students. And when we...this year, we have 75 students in the academy and we also have therapies that she'll tell you more about. We have about 20 therapists providing different kinds of therapies in the building. We still try to keep our costs close to that scholarship amount because our goal is that no child misses the opportunity to have...to be able to reach their potential simply because they didn't have the financial means to reach that. We opened, hold him fast to God's promise that He made every individual with a purpose and a plan. And as soon as a child walks through our doors, we start working on helping them find that purpose and preparing them for that plan for their life. Students that have graduated have found their purpose in places like quality foods, Chick-fil-A, construction companies, and then meaningful volunteer opportunities. We have students there that come in communicating only through behaviors because we know behaviors, they are communicating, but that's not going to help them be successful in life. So we have children that talk through their hands, they talk through their voice, they talk through devices, and we work on them being able to communicate well through all of these forms of language so that they can be understood in the world. We have both students that are planning for careers of their choosing and students that are preparing for meaningful volunteer work. And our students feel successful in areas that they never thought they could succeed. They come into us often feeling like a failure and that they can't do any better. We take students that aren't succeeding with traditional tools and provide smaller classes, one-on-one support, and lots of love and support from our staff. We have a team that supports their social and emotional needs right off the bat because sometimes that's their biggest barrier to success. We also have a hair salon because we have kids that come in with one side of their haircut because that's the way they slept that night, going to get the other side tomorrow, hope they sleep the other way. And so that seems pretty important to our families and I guess it is because when I give tours, they often weep at the salon. So we have somebody that comes in that has their own child that's on the spectrum and they...she's very successful at cutting our kids' hair. And now we have graduates, alumni, I like saying that, who have graduated at every level from a certificate of completion, which means we have them as ready as they can possibly be to live independently and have a meaningful and rich life, all the way to students that graduate...last year, we had one graduate with honors and that was by the standards set forth by the state of Georgia. It wasn't anything that we adapted. And some of our students are duly enrolled at Athens Tech, but it's a big difference when they realize they can succeed. We see a whole different level of confidence and they'll try other things. Now, we are trying, working hard to build the services at either end of school age, are from infants and pre-K and then the adults because some children leave our building and they're not really ready yet. And so they need not only a meaningful way to fill their day, but they have further to go to learn vocational skills and to live independently. In addition, in any given year, we serve kids from as many as 16 counties. So some of our families drive a pretty good distance to come here and then they spend their days in Monroe if they've come a long way, eating and playing and shopping here. And that makes us very happy since we were committed to staying right here in Monroe. Kids who have not had the slightest measure of success are growing and thriving and families are getting support, not just from us, but from each other. And that's always really fun to watch. We find that some of our students are finding their very first friends, but we're also finding that some of our parents are finding their first friends in a long time because their life has been pretty isolated. So I'm going to end by saying something that I've wanted to say for about 13 years. Thank you. Thank you for helping us have the opportunity to be hope givers. It's my very favorite part of the job. And so I'm going to hand it over to Molly. She's our clinical director at the Bridge of Georgia.
Thank you, Tammy.
Hi, Molly Misselli. I'm the clinical director at the Bridge of Georgia. I provide...
Molly, if you don't mind, speaking of the microphone...
Yeah, sorry.
I just want to hear you at home.
Well, you know, they teach you to walk around. So I provide behavior therapy for, I would say, about 20 kids. We're expected to double that number this year. We started with about maybe two or three and one therapist, which was myself. Since then, my team has grown into about 10 different therapists, 15 on a given week. And we've partnered with a lot of different companies, so, you know, Walton County's been really great to us, City of Monroe's been really great. We partner with Team Up Mentoring and different youth advocacy groups. And we actually just did an Autism Alley across from La Gabrielle and so some of my kids went over and decorated some of those. And if you want to stop by, it's really cute and they took a lot of effort and, you know, stop by, take a picture. I'm sure that they would love to see, you know, members of their council enjoying their hard work. And then Mayor Howard also said that we offer Tiger Cafe, which is from 8 to 9 on Fridays. And so the kids host like little coffee shops. They make the, you know, muffins and trinkets themselves and they work on like restaurant management and profits of making it versus selling it and all different kinds of things like that. So you want to see some of our kids at work and at play, swing by. We'd love to have you.
Thank you so...thank you so much, ladies. And I really do, if you haven't seen Autism Alley, they just did that two days ago?
Yeah, two days ago.
And it's really cool and it's an area that really needed some improvement, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We love doing it, so...
Appreciate you coming in.
All right, thank you so much.
And y'all have to sit through this. If you want to take off, take off. Not you, Lauren, you have to stay.
Run fast.
Thank you, ladies. Yes, ma'am. I have one sign up for public comment, Ms. Adrian Vines. How are you, Adrian? Good. Business.
So I'm the owner of The Loft. We opened up this past October. We've been very well-received in the city and had a lot of fun getting to know other business owners as well as those in the community. One of the things that we're running into, which all small business owners do, is staying relevant and also finding ways to continue to set ourselves apart. We sell wine, we sell wine-based cocktails, so mimosas and things like that. We've really not had any use for the Monroe Cup. We're not really mobile. Most of what is consumed is either they're on premises or they will take the cup down into the shops because we're on the third floor of the Mercantile Building. And I've been pretty intentional with that because I want my other vendors in the shop to benefit from what we're doing. So the first stop is our loft and then they wander around the shop and enjoy their sip and shop. As the weather is getting warmer and we're having more and more outdoor activities, we're running into finding people wanting to be able to take our product out with them. Again, the Monroe Cup is fine, it works, but two of our products just really aren't conducive to using those cups and what I'm seeking is an alternative to the Monroe Cup. Not an exception, but an equitable alternative. One of our products is a wine slushy. They're frozen in bags like this. I don't want to take it out of the bag. I like it in the bag. You stick a little straw in it, you're good to go. I also have small cups that go in our portable charcuterie picnic baskets and they are little wine cups that you build and that way they stay in the basket. You're not having to have bulky cups. What I propose is some sort of label or sticker, the same as the Monroe Cup, but what I can add to the product that I already have. I have absolutely no issue paying the same amount for the sticker that you would pay for the cup. It's not about saving money, it's about protecting the aesthetics of my product. So that's really what I'm seeking is just some sort of alternative to what we're already doing. We already have people walking around with alcohol in cups. I would just like another way to do it for my shop to keep us set apart.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions? We'll take that under advisement. Usually, you don't get any response anyway, but we'll take it under advisement. Appreciate you coming in. Moving to Mr. Probst, City Administrator update.
All right, thank you, Mayor. First, I want to introduce our new Economic Development Manager, Brian Wilson. Stand up there, Brian. After a long process we went through to find the right fit for us, I think Brian's our guy. He's already jumped in with both feet and making a lot of great contacts and I think he's going to be an asset to us. So get used to his pretty face back there and if you ever need anything, he's upstairs on the second floor of City Hall. He'll be happy to meet with you. Number two, the grand opening of the Town Green is scheduled for April 18th, 4:00 p.m. This has been a long time in the making, six years to be exact. So we're excited to kick that off with a little ribbon cutting and celebration with a little bit of local flavor from the...from some bands. So we're really looking forward to kicking this thing off. Hope to see you all out there that afternoon.
Mr. Probst, you need to amplify that about the bands because they are all local. There are five of them. They've all played at the 105. And I'm telling you, it's going to be a great show. These people are all excellent. So we need to be publicizing a little more about that aspect of it because, no offense to the mayor, but I don't think a thousand people are going to get all excited about hearing his speech, so... Sorry.
Well, let that stay at the policymaking level.
I don't blame them.
So we started the rollout of that, I think, today and we'll continue to do that. Sandy, take note. We'll pump up the local band flavor right there, okay? And thank you, David. I had no doubts you would speak up to that. Third, splosh. I talked a little bit about it last month, but again, early voting starts April 29th and Election Day is May 21st. This is critically important for our budget. We're anticipated to bring in about a little over $15 million for just the City of Monroe. And again, that's going to go towards public safety, you know, vehicles and facilities, transportation projects of all kind. That's for your walkability, that's for major road projects, that's for rehab of our streets, public facilities, capital improvements. I'm sure most people would rather that come from a few pennies of sales tax than a huge hit in their property tax to take care of our existing facilities. We need to keep those up so that we don't have huge bills later on. And the parks, of course, we've had a very successful parks program over the last few years where we took those back from the county who, they really weren't maintaining them very well. And we've been able to transform our parks and we still have a little ways to go. But the Town Green is, is evidence of what we can do with parks sploshed. Pilot Club Park, Matthews Park, rehabbing of Childers. All of that's been under our previous and current splosh program. So we hope to keep that going. So just education-wise, that is what your penny will go towards. It's a renewal, not a new tax.
Thank you, Mr. Probst. Is there any questions for Logan? Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, sir. So how about the car show, right? The 19th Annual was the biggest yet. We had approximately 575 registered vehicles that day. And what I would feel like was probably pushing 800 actual vehicles in town. Our data showed that we peaked out at about 23,000 people that day. Of course, we know how that goes with the cell phone capacity and whatnot. And, you know, it looked like every bit of, or more than that. You know, I always say 30, 35,000 is possible. There were a lot of people. Staff, our citizens, our business owners, our volunteers, everybody. It was just, it was a wonderful event of a lot of people coming together to, once again, make Monroe shine. And I think we certainly did. I know my legs felt it the next day. So, and then the next day and the next day. But great event. The 20th next year, 20th Annual will be bigger than this one. I have no doubt. And then, of course, earlier Logan mentioned our grand opening of the Town Green at four o'clock. I, I will be there to listen to you, Mayor, give the speech. I don't know, Mr. Dickinson.
You and 998 other people, I'm sure.
Looking forward to the rest of it, though. Farmer's Market kicked off this past Saturday. It was very well attended. We should hopefully have some numbers for our downtown attendance, hopefully tomorrow, maybe Thursday. And then I guess our next big event outside of the first Friday night concert starting May the 3rd and the grand opening will be our Flower Festival that'll be on June 15th. We've had a volunteer group and then staff meeting roughly every two weeks, I think it is. And we are, I don't want to say sitting back twiddling our thumbs waiting on it to happen, but we are well ahead of schedule on planning and look forward to that being a bigger event than it's ever been. Currently, I think we have about 115 applicants for vendor spaces when in the past, we've only had somewhere between 50 and 60. So much bigger. And with that, I will take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Bailey? Thank you, Chris. Going to come back to you on central services.
Actually, I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Crowe as that is his department nowadays.
Thank you, Chris. How y'all doing? All right. So for the month of March, litter pickup totaled just under 4,400 pounds. So that was looking good. Let's see, we, everybody keeps mentioning the grand opening at the Town Green. And our staff has been working, it seems like, since they, they got completed with construction, trying to get the place furnished and all of the different elements ready. So we're, we're continuing to getting those things ready, stuff like the AV systems, furnishing, furnishing, furniture for the green room. But we'll have all that ready for the grand opening and then looking forward to summer concert series. I know we've mentioned, or Bailey has mentioned a few times, the visitor center. We had a pre-construction meeting actually this afternoon. So we're working on getting our schedule put together and, and what that's going to look like and all the moving parts for that project for the exterior rehab of the visitor center. Hopefully, hopefully that's going to turn out real good. We're looking at about a two-month project once that does start. Sometime late last year, me and Mr. Steele actually started working with a company called Street Logics to come in and do some data collection of our roadways and our sidewalks. It's nothing too new. Jeremiah does have our streets, our data collected yearly. But this company, they're going to come in and also, in addition to that, do our sidewalks. So they're going to come in and GIS map all of our sidewalk network. We'll use this data to help determine the conditions of our network, of our streets and the sidewalks, and then be able to help us determine what areas need improvement. Brad Callender's been instrumental in helping us getting the GIS layers put together. So I know he's not here, but I appreciate what he did helping us do that. On, on a side note, they, they actually have been here. They, they drive around in a car just like Google does and use video or use AI and like light hour technology to capture all that data. Actually got a call from them Friday and they just called to tell me how beautiful they thought Monroe was with the grass cutting, the trash on the, you know, it just looked good. They, they go to communities all over North America. And they took the time out to call and, and give us that compliment. And so, you know, I, I appreciate all the hard work that Chris Smith, our Parks and Grounds Manager, does and his team. And I know we can always find areas that need some extra attention, but from overall, I think they do a great job. And I was happy that they called and told us that. Ms. Malcolm, I know last month you, you mentioned something about AT&amp;T getting on towers here. I am working with them, trying to identify some areas that, that will work for them and where their infrastructure will work. So we are working on those areas and just seeing what will, what will AT&amp;T approve. So hopefully, once we get something back from them, I can update you. At the airport, we're getting ready to start a taxiway rehab that y'all approved. And we've yet to have that pre-con, but soon as we do, we'll get a start date and I can inform you on that. Been working on some tea hangar agreements to increase our tinger, tea hangar space, which one will come before you that Mr. Bailey will have for you at the end of our reports. That's all I have unless you've got some questions.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. Are there any questions for Chris? I appreciate you. I appreciate your responsiveness, too, because very rarely has anyone requested something in a meeting and had the person the following month come and say, this is who I've talked to and this is what's done. So I appreciate it. And, and to, to piggyback on, on the guys who said how much, how lovely the town is, from what Chris just said, you look back, we have some people on our team who are here day to day, hour to hour. They've, they've all bought in and it's a, it's a great thing to see and it's very easy to see. Going to zip over to, where am I? Code report. Brad's not here. Do you want to take it, Logan?
Yeah, I'll take it. Just a couple of things here worthy of mention. We didn't have a whole lot on the Marshall side. Marshall was out on military leave for most of the previous month. So that's why that report looks a little down. But there were only two planning commission items, request for COA for a dog kennel, which was approved on North Broad and a request for a preliminary plat. That was the Madison Ridge subdivision. So that was just making its way back through. There hasn't been a whole lot of activity coming for you tonight. This is probably the first time in a long time we, we don't have any real planning code items before you. Doesn't mean there's not a lot going on in the background. Brad and I have had numerous, what we call pre-application meetings. These are really pre, pre-application meetings, mainly with, you know, large lot developments. So we do have that moratorium in place on large lot developments for preliminary plats. But we're trying to make sure that we're working with these property owners to do things the right way with your collective vision, that we've all gone through these processes, through the comp plan and form-based codes and so on and so forth. So we're making a lot of progress with a lot of the property owners. It's just a lot of these things are going to take a lot of time. But in the next few months, you'll probably see some more activity pick back up in Planning and Zoning Commission and then back before you as a lot of things make their way through the system.
Thank you, Mr. Probst. So any questions for Logan?
No report right now on that.
Nothing economic development tonight. Finance, Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. You have before you the finance report as of February in your packet. If you'll notice on my first page is a snapshot summary of the major funds for general fund, utility fund, and solid waste that was requested. If there's anything different you'd like to see on that, just please shoot me an email. I'll be glad to tweak that or change it to the way of your liking and what you want to see. If you have any questions about that finance report, please let me know. Staff is still working with our external auditing firm, Malden and Jenkins. They're working remotely. We hope to have finalized numbers to you probably in June. I was hoping in May, but they're still lagging. So we're waiting on auditors to finally get those finalized numbers to us. And lastly, proud to announce, I know the guys always give me a hard time because I get awards, but this is our 19th year of Government Finance Officers Association awarding, the award for outstanding achievement of popular annual of financial reporting. So we were, we received that award from GFOA and this is the 19th year that we got that. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Congratulations.
Want to brag on, yeah. If I could brag on Beth a little bit, those awards, I know we get them all the time. You know, it's old hat to us, but there's a lot of extra work that goes into, to getting these documents ready that a lot of communities don't do. And so we do three major documents, the budget. Yeah, there you go. The budget, the audit report, and the popular financial report. And that's, it's just an incredible amount of work that goes into displaying the, the financial details that we have. So good job, Beth.
That's great, Ms. Thompson. Thank you. Are there any questions for Beth? You know, and move to Chief Dykes, fire report.
Thank you, Mayor. You have before you the February incident data for the department. And I would like to add, we had the busiest February of the past four years. And then I got to looking and remembering that this was a leap year. And on the 29th of February, we had 12 incidents. So that accounted for why we had the busiest, the busiest year in four years. Also, there is, there is a correction that I will resubmit to you on the valuation of loss on the last page in your packet. That will be updated. There was a, there was a data submission issue on that. So I will get that corrected. But talk about a few things that we've done since the last time we met here. On the 25th, we had our awards banquet. And I think it was well received by our personnel, had our retirees, our personnel, friends, family, and other folks. But I would like to recognize the folks that received awards that night. For those of y'all that were not able to attend, super proud of these guys and all the work that they do for the department and the community. So first of all, we have the battalion chief award and that went to firefighter Reed Benton, Captain Curtis Pounds, and firefighter Austin White. That's an award that's picked by their shift supervisor. And oftentimes, there's a lot of stuff that goes on behind the scenes that everybody doesn't know about. And so that's an opportunity for the shift commanders to be able to reward those folks that may be doing things behind the scenes that others aren't aware of. Really proud of those folks. Now, the rest of our awards are actually voted on by the peer group. And having compiled all the notes from what people wrote, it was really nice to see that our peers in the fire, in the fire department see the same thing that I see out of our folks. So we actually had two rookies of the year because of a time lapse since our last awards banquet. And that was firefighter Branson Oliver and firefighter Clayton Payne. Officer of the Year was Lieutenant Chris Sneed and our firefighter of the year was Jacob Garner. And all of these folks had very, very positive comments from their peer group, which is, is exceptional. And I'll speak to each of them and what they, what they provided to the department. One thing I'll add to, for those of you all that were there and heard the story, we were the first department in, in the county to receive a child last September under the safe haven law. And we acknowledged the crew that received the baby, the newborn, within a few hours of being born. Well, in the process of me reaching out to DFAX to find out the status of that child, who was perfectly healthy, we were very happy to report, we were able to kind of reestablish some things. And last week, I received a call from DFAX and the foster family that has, that is fostering that child was in town, wanted to meet that crew and they were able to bring baby Jane Doe by the station to meet the crew that, that received her, which I thought was, was great. Always like to have a happy ending to those types of situations. And, and very happy that we have that law in place because, as I said, at the, at the banquet, I, I'm fearful for what the outcome of that situation would have been had there not been the opportunity to bring a child, infant, and drop them off. Couple other things that we did. We hosted an esophageal cancer screening for all the fire departments in the county. Piedmont reached out to all the departments and they teamed up with Esoguard. And last week or two weeks ago, we participated in that process. Real exciting. You get to swallow a pill that's connected to a tube and they, to your stomach and they pull, inflate it, pull it out and swab your entire esophagus for precancerous cells. But why? Firefighters have a 62% greater risk of, of developing esophageal adenocarcinoma and a 39% higher likelihood of dying from it. And most of the times, it's asymptomatic until it is very far advanced. So we hosted almost 60 firefighters and a few other guests, including Les and our new economic manager who happened to stop by the station at just the right time. But anything that we can do on the prevention side is, is definitely great for our, our folks. So we're all waiting, hopefully, just the nice email that says, thank you for participating. You're clear. You don't have to do this for another five years because I don't want to do that for another five years. Past two weeks, Battalion Chief White and Cooper have been at Jipstick taking the two-week-long fire department administrator course where they're learning all the fun stuff like government budgeting from someone other than me. And they came back and said a few things and, oh, we really didn't realize it was like that. And so, yes, it's really like that, but extremely difficult class and really happy that they, they have completed that. And lastly, I'll conclude, New, New Fire Engine is scheduled to come off assembly next week. And a group of us are then supposed to go down the week of the 22nd to the assembly plant and do a final inspection before it arrives back in Monroe. So next month, you should have a bright red fire, fire truck outside. So that is my report. Happy to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you, Chief Dykes. Are there any questions for Andrew? Chief Watts?
Thank you, Mayor. Looking at our neighbors' reports, something that's significant is how our guys are doing such a great job on the streets here. Our crimes against persons are down by 33%. Crimes against property is down by 77% and crimes against society is down 56%, which is a testament to the hard work that these men and women do. Something I wanted to highlight was, you guys know back in September, came before the council and got approval for us to purchase the acronym FRED, but it's a forensic recovery evidence, evidence device. That's what we utilize to extract evidence off of cell phones, tablets, computers, such like that. Well, from January of 2023 till September of 2023, before we purchased that, that device, we had 44 cases with a download of 75 devices that we were trying to extract evidence from. Since September of last year to currently, we, we're already up to 52 cases and 102 devices that were downloaded. I mean, that's just to now. And other agencies have learned that we have the capabilities to extract this information. So we have agencies like GSP, Oak County Sheriff's Office, Walton County DA's office, Watkinsville's PD, and also Walton County Sheriff's Office that are utilizing our, our equipment and our officers and technicians that are experts at extracting this information. And I'm going to tell you, if you don't ever, if you have never been by the police department, come by and look at that. And, and these officers, I mean, they're well-trained. They can tell you the types of cases, which some of them are very sickening to, to be a part of. But I'm grateful for it because we're able to identify these predators and, and, you know, bring them to justice. Another thing I want to highlight is, you know, we took 11 handguns off the streets in the month of February. We executed 12 search warrants. And, you know, we had that incident on Madison Avenue where the juveniles had the shootout over here on Madison Avenue. We were making arrests immediately on that, that homicide. But the next case I wanted to talk about, we're actually coming up on the anniversary of the murder in Stone Creek Bend subdivision where the mother was brutally murdered in front of her children on April 16th, 2022. Another case that flock camera systems that we have utilized in the city helped us to track down that individual. We actually made arrests on him within five hours. And that's a kidnapping homicide that we worked. And that also, that case went before Superior Court in February. that also, that case went before Superior Court in February, and that was a, that was a win for us. The suspect, which was Gregory Deontay Norwood, was sentenced to life with no parole plus 100 years. So, I mean, it was a huge win for the Monroe Police Department, Criminal Investigation Division, Walton County DA's office, to get such a lengthy sentence on that individual. And that's all I have right now. If you guys have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Chief Watts?
I will say, I did go by and toured the police departments, and it's, since it's been years since I've seen it. And I, I'm impressed with what they have. And I think we have one of the best police departments and fire departments in the, in the state, really. We, we have, and they keep growing. And just the equipment that the cities allow them to buy, and some on some seeds, assets and stuff, it's great. And I, I hope it runs all these criminals out of here, and so we can't, we can't be bad in the city of Monroe, because they'll catch us.
You got it. And those three numbers that you mentioned, very first thing, we're down in...
So, you have it actually in your package. If you look, it's...
I just want them to hear it.
Right.
All down 30% or more.
You know, and I usually, so we used to do uniform crime reporting, UCR reporting, and now we're doing NIBR's, which was a major reporting. But again, it's your, what I used to say part one, part two, now it's part A, part B, same thing, your, your most violent crimes, and then your, your joblifting, stalking, everything is down. That's the moment.
That's fantastic.
Now, calls for service are going up, and we are getting more calls for service through the city, and that's going to be more people, we're going to have more.
Right. Thank you, RV. Appreciate it. Danny Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I got a couple things. Mattress update, we picked up 171 mattresses back in February at over $2,500, but we could only bill out with 780, because quite a few of them showing up at random sites. We can't ID. Our delivery truck from our vendor hadn't got here yet. Apparently, we're not the only one that having problems with mattresses all over the state. He had 60 orders for 53-foot trailers that pushed us back. So hopefully, we, we'll get ours, and that'll save some costs. We did send out notices to property owners at these multifamily apartments, that if we cannot ID what the matches are, that they have to cover the cost of us collecting them. Second thing, our knuckle boom truck is back online as of yesterday. It's been down for like three and a half weeks. We've got, had us off schedules, especially the yard debris pickup. So the next few weeks, we're going to be starting what I call Operation Clean Sweep. We're going to be picking up everything. We have several cleanouts, that's, and illegal dump sites that's been all over the city. So the next several weeks, we'll be cleaning all of those up. Just want to remind the residents to make sure they don't mix their yard debris with the bulk waste, because they go to two separate locations. Not set them out near utilities and over power lines, because that's what's causing us to skip some of the, some of the items, because boom cannot reach them. But that's pretty much it. I take any questions, Mr. Meyer?
And not in the street.
And not in the street, of course.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Smith? Thank you, Dan. Jeremiah, Streets and Transportation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Without going through too much of the report, I did want to highlight one area, the stormwater report. And it's mind-blowing every month when we look at these numbers, but there was over 10,000 pounds of debris collected from the grates within the city limits. If those guys and that crew didn't do anything else but clean grates, it's, it would be a full-time job. But they're also a part of several other projects. One major one we got going on right now that's wrapping up is on Plaza. We spoke about it last month. We should be finished, weather permitting, middle of next week. We've had three or four rain events that's caused us some delay there, but we're well under what the timeframe, I think, is going to be completed under. And I will add that we did not put concrete pipe under there, as we originally were going to. We found a, a new product, fairly new product, that's rated the same for about $35,000 less than what it would have cost for the concrete. So, it's a, it's a double walled, it's, it's a, it's like an HDP with a metal pipe inside of it. So, it's a sturdy piece, 80 foot of it. And if it fails in 50 years, we can replace it cheaper than we could have did the concrete one time around. Something huge for us is coming down the pipe, and it'll be on the agenda next month, is there is a, a new supplement this year, similar to the L-MIG grant, that's going to give us about a little bit over a quarter million dollars to spend on our infrastructure. And deciding on how to do that will take place between now and, when it comes to you next month. Chris Croy mentioned this new service that we, we've contracted with, Street Logix, that will give us an assessment and pavement condition index of our streets. We were in a meeting together last week, and I was hoping the data collected would get to us a little faster, so we could use that to decide where to spend this chunk of money best. But it's going to be about three months before we get that data. So, we'll put some boots to the ground and come up with the best option for us to spend this new supplemental grant that we're going to get, which leads into paving, which leads into some equipment. I know Chief's been waiting on, on the fire truck. We're waiting on some equipment as well. And it's supposed to be here, hopefully by the end of the month. And once we get it, it's a skid steer and coal planer, we'll start doing the patchwork for the L-MIG section of our, our summer projects. I'll be glad to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Still. Any questions for Jeremiah? You're in, Mike McGuire.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things I want to touch on real quick for you. Fiber progress continues. We've actually started hooking up the first subdivision north of town off of our new ADTRAN chassis. We just turned up Tanglewood, and a lot of, a lot of internet installs in there to do. So we've reached out to those residents to start converting that process. They are currently working in Highland Creek subdivision. That one should probably be ready to go, probably by sometime next week, or the week after at the latest, as long as they don't run any problems. And then from there, they'll probably venture on and, and hit the Cedar Ridge area, along with Morgan's Crossing subdivision. So we're finally getting this side of town spun up. That's, you know, been on a, a waiting list for a while there. So we've, we've got a lot of installs that are going to be heading our way in conversion to do there. So we're really excited about that, to actually have a couple of the first ones cut up. We're at about 47% of fiber customers, of, of current fiber, internet customers that we have, and 53 in cable modem. So if the trend continues, but hopefully by this time next month, we will finally cross the tipping point and actually have more fiber customers than we do cable modem customers, which I'm very excited about. The more we can get over on fiber, the, the better off life is for everybody. So, streaming TV officially launched the last week of March. We can have customers sign up for streaming TV now. We've actually gotten a handful of customers have already signed up with us. I walk through the, the lobby from time to time, and I see customers with some of our CSR reps, and they have the remote out, and they're showing them the streaming TV on the TV that's in there. We have literature that we've armed them with for a, a quick and easy channel guide. It tells you what channels we currently carry, what's existing, what's new, what channels on which tier. So if you're looking for a particular channel and alphabetical list, you can look real quick and find whether or not it's on the platform, and if it is, what, what tier it belongs in. So, our next phase in that is going to be to work with our customer service department to come up. I've already talked with Beth about coming up with a mailer that we can mail out to everybody, which brings me to my next point. I would like to officially have the official hard cutoff date for what I'm referring to as legacy cable TV at this point, being the first Monday in August. It would be, it would be August 4th, would be the hard cutoff date. And that's, that is what I'm shooting at. And I feel at this point, we give enough customers enough time, three months, three full months, to let them know, hey, this is coming. Part of that, I've already met with two of the elderly facilities here in town. I've sat down with their directors and have gone over all of the ins and outs of the streaming platform, options for them, let them know what's coming. I've got about two other facilities that I'm trying to get ahold of right now to contact them, to let them know. So getting the information out and just getting everybody aware of what's coming and, and how that's going to, the changes are going to take place is, is the next aim in with that. I'd like to use the cutoff of the legacy cable TV as what I would like to refer to as Phase Three in this operation. And when that actually happens and arrives, I would then like to actually start to dismantle or decommission parts of our cable plant that are no longer in use anymore. We, we have some areas in town still, we have customers where fiber has been available for months, and we, we actually have a list of customers that just refuse. They, they tell us they do not want fiber. So we, we need a way to say, either you're going to have to migrate to us, or you're going to have to find another alternative. And so, doing away with cable TV gives us that option to actually start decommissioning the plant at that point. So once we arrive there, we are going to start to look aggressively at places where that can take place. And we're going to start moving forward to that, to finally get us in this, this momentum of getting out of the, out of the cable realm and fully into fiber. We've opened up a telecom, what I call a telecom support center. So we're pulling most of our in-office staff into a centralized location. And with that comes the hiring of two new employees. One just started this week, gentleman by the name of Kylie Cousins, and one will start next week, a gentleman by the name of Joseph Halb, Hal Forster. I, I told him, I said, "I would probably butcher your name when I tried to say it." But, we're really excited. We had a lot of really good applicants that applied. It was a tough choice for us. Part of that application process for them is, they not only met with a, a panel of three of us and went over, you know, if they're qualified, and what they knew and stuff, but we actually pulled a curveball on them and brought them into a room where I purposely sabotaged four computers in a scenario like they would find out. And so you can snow me on paper, but you can't snow me in front of those four screens. And it was very interesting watching some of these people who told me that they were very confident in their technical, technical abilities, not know what to do when they got in front of a screen whatsoever. So, that was, that was really good. So we used a combination of their interviews, plus what we gauged that they could and could not do in the lab there. And we felt like we, we brought on two people. We're really excited to get this spun up. They, we've let them know in advance during the hiring process, y'all are going to be very busy come August. Y'all are going to be very, very busy, because when we decommission cable TV, we're going to use you guys to help with that transition process, and helping people that maybe have some challenges or complications in getting over to that streaming project. So they, they're fully aware of what they're walking into when they, when they get in here. So we're excited to have them on board with us. And then last but not least, on the training and education side, I want to say congratulations to Scott Emrick for passing his Network Plus certification. This now qualifies him as a CSIS, which stands for a CompTIA Secure Infrastructure Specialist. That signifies that he is certified in A+ Network Plus and Security Plus, which is a, is a big deal for us. The more knowledge you can outfit people with, just the better off we are. And congratulations to Eli, who passed part of his, his second part of his A+ certification. So now he is actually A+ certified in the CompTIA program. So we're really proud of those guys to continue their education and, and get more certifications under their belt to help assist us in day-to-day operations. So I, I will have, answer any questions y'all may have.
Any questions for Mr. McGuire? Thank you, Mike. Can you congratulate Mr. Emrick and Eli Forrest?
Will.
Graduate of Monroe Country Day School.
Yes.
Make sure you tell Rita that we brought him up again.
Okay.
I will.
Mr. Middlebrooks?
He asked me, he, he wouldn't be here tonight, but he, he just gave me a couple of bullet points real quick to run over with the council.
It'd be great.
Real fast. So, he just wanted me to let you guys know that the gas and fiber joint trenching, which we've been working with the gas department on, is now 75% complete for Phase One of Rivers Ed subdivision. The grant application has been completed and submitted for the MEAG Department of Energy Grid, which is a grid resiliency improvement project that they're working on. He said it's a total of 9.40, $9.45 million, which is reconductoring 9.5 miles of the electric system, along with completing the switch install for that project as well. The contractor has begun the sewer rehab for the 2022 CDBG, I hope I got that right, along Bryant Road, Stower Street, Glen Iris, and Edward Street. And last but not least, he said they are expecting the EPD's response for the anti-deg- degreg- de- degradation. Thank you. I can't get that word. Report for the Jacks Creek Wastewater Plant. And I would say I would answer any questions that you have, but I will just relay them to Rodney for you if you have them, so.
If you have any questions, let me know. Call Rodney, or you can let me know, and I'll call Rodney. So, thank you.
No problem.
Much, Mike. Appreciate it. Moving to department requests, Mr. Bailey, by the land lease hanger construction agreement?
Thank you, sir. Had mentioned this briefly this past month, and over, I guess, back during the CIP process, to where we had requested the funds for our current consultant GMC for the airport to come up with a full-fledged site plan for the addition of 22 T-hanger units at the airport on the Toller Street side. This is for a private third party to come in, do the groundwork, to do the construction of the hangars, everything. They own them, but we get the benefits of having the aircraft on the airport. So, his plan is to build the first section of 10, and then once that's complete later in the year, to then come in and do the second set of 12 T-hangers. Same enterprise that built the original 12 that are on the Richard Parsons side. So we've had good luck with how he constructed the hangar, how he's managed the tenants. They do use our wait lists to reach out to and, and provide space for aircraft storage. And currently, just a little bit of a numbers game, we have 22 T-hanger units at the airport. This would add an additional 22, which would bring us to 50 total. And that helps us with applications for grant funding, because our base aircraft increases. Obviously, it increases your fuel cells. It helps increase your availability of what I would consider your needed features of an airport, bringing in a mechanic to then support themselves and their business on the airport. It also ties in with the usage of the terminal building, and overall helps grow the airport for the future. So asking for approval for the city to enter into the land lease agreement with JRM Enterprises. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Chris. So any questions for Mr. Bailey? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Ms. Sam is there, second?
Second.
Ms. Brown, is there any discussion? You're in, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, side. Motion carries, that passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great American Cleanup Week, April 22nd through the 26th. Mr. Smith?
Okay, yeah, we're asking your approval to designate that week. Participating in Great American Cleanup, residents can have an opportunity to do some spring cleaning and get it off the curb, and bring, bring tire facility at 213 Cherry Hill Road. We'll take up the 10 tires, regular car tires, and we're not accepting mattresses, of course. But, yeah, we'd like to use that, that week to help citizens who want to bring stuff out during that week.
Thank you. We're doing Cleanup Day on the 20th, Saturday before, right?
That, that's correct.
Yeah, I forgot that shameless plug earlier. April 20th is our Community Cleanup Day. So, if you want to participate, be here at City Hall. It starts at 9:00. I would be here at 8:00. We have a little fun activity kind of planned, and I'll be the emcee for the event, so that's always a blast. And then after the event's over, at noon, we will have a, another little special treat that I haven't really announced yet for people that volunteered. I know Ms. Brown has worked heavily to get communities involved in her district, and it is, so I'm hoping, last year we had 85 participate. This year, I'm hoping it's much bigger. Sorry.
Thank you for that plug.
I have one question regarding Streets and Sanitation. Could I ask, Jeremiah, do you think that there, it would be beneficial if we better identify those... Jeremiah, do you think that it would be beneficial if we better identify those areas where we're having so much problem with the dumping? I know we have the seal for the waterway and on the ground beside those, but those are not, people don't even pay attention to them. And maybe if we, do we need to put a fine if people are caught?
You talking about bulking up some signage in those areas?
I mean, it's taking so much of your manpower and Danny's, yeah. It's just a thought.
Anything we can lean on to help? Any other questions for Danny? You're none, I'll entertain a motion.
Make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is it okay to give you a second?
Yeah.
Ms. Malcolm, is there any discussion? You're none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. From new business, we have moved the appointment of the city attorney to executive session, and then we move to the approval of the right-of-way mowing, maintenance, and sidewalk agreement for the state route eleven between Highland Avenue and Marable Street. Mr. Probst?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Bailey handled a lot of this for us this year, so if you want to add anything, Chris, please do. But essentially, this is a traditional mowing and maintenance right-of-way agreement that we do for a lot of our streetscape projects, and this goes part and parcel with the TAP grant that we have running down eleven from Highland and to Marable and Northland. So we're gonna be taking care of any of those, those areas around state right-of-ways and along state right-of-ways as we get state funding for enhancements of it. So it's in our responsibility.
Perfect. Are there any questions for Mr. Probst? You're none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Ms. Malcolm, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Crawford, is there any discussion? You're none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Resolution for Georgia Cities Week, Mr. Probst?
Again, we have our standard resolution for Georgia Cities Week, and it's, there's nothing standard about us cities. I think we're a dynamic and important driving economic force in the state of Georgia. Monroe is certainly no exception. So here we have a resolution before you, like we do each year. Any questions?
Are there any questions for Logan? Does anyone wish to have the resolution read? I'll entertain a motion, please.
I have to approve.
Motion to approve by Ms. Sims, is there a second?
Second.
You have a second, and Ms. Brown, she's new. Any discussion? You're none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to district items, Ms. Malcolm.
No, I don't have anything at the moment.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Boys.
No, sir.
Basketball team?
Number one in the state and the nation.
Wow, right. Ms. Samms?
It's kind of in Ms. Brown's district, but Habitat is building two houses down on South Madison, and we are looking for volunteers for this weekend from eight to two. You get to come spend a few hours with me, and I'll even take care of buying you lunch. So if you can volunteer, just let me know, and we'll get you set up.
Thank you, Julie. Ms. Brown?
Yes, we are excited about Cleanup Day on April the twentieth. A lot of activity going on in District Five, so Monroe Estates has stepped up. They have a big group that's going to go out and clean up down there by the airport. Really excited about that. Young Pines, Stone Creek has a lot of volunteers, so a lot of movement, and if anybody wants to get set up and do something, and I'll come out and help, they can reach out to me. And I also wanted to let everyone know about Community Impact Day on April the twenty-seventh, and that's with Habitat for Humanity. So I'm hoping that everyone can come out. It'll be at the Boys and Girls Club, and that'll be on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, from ten AM to two PM. And as Julie just stated, they're helping to build a house, so the gentleman that's getting one of the houses over there, he was at Impact last year, and he's closing this year. So tell a friend, tell a family member, someone, apply for Habitat.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Mr. Gregory?
Just wanted to second what Ms. Brown said, and that's all, thank you.
And you married up, man. Thank you for bringing Lauren in.
Well, thanks. I could have been a Florida fan, I guess.
So, so obviously, I had to marry way up, right? She graduated from Georgia. She can color between the lines. Mr. Thompson?
All's quiet in District Seven, as far as I know.
Thank you. Mr. Dickinson?
Nothing else.
Thank you, David. I'm a little bit redundant here. Grand opening of the Town Green on the eighteenth, but before that, we have a grand opening of the Butterfly Garden at the library. The twentieth is Community Cleanup Day, and I specifically wanted to mention, Ms. Brown, how much I appreciate your working with individual neighborhoods. I always, I try to get groups here, and I have a couple that are coming, I'll get with Chris on later, that'll be right out front, but to actually go take part of doing it for their neighborhoods, we haven't had that, so thank you. Logan sent out a SPOLOST note either this afternoon or yesterday that showed the points from whence the money comes, from the folks who shop in, within the city limits of Monroe, and where they come, or how far they come. So as we're moving, we had a meeting with chairman yesterday, as we're moving towards this SPOLOST, we don't say vote for it, vote against it, but I do want just to be transparent. There will be a four mil increase in your, on your county tax bill if that SPOLOST doesn't pass. And it's not a new SPOLOST, it's just a continuation, but it's something that we vote for every few years, so I want to let you know that. Your personal financial statements are due July first. I think Beverly's either has the note with you right now, or she'll have one for you next month. And just wanted to say, Sandy and Laura Beth, you're working tails off, and I appreciate it. The other one who's working her tail off, who's not here tonight, is Audrey. She decided to rejoin us with the market. Man, she's the best. So, so we're lucky to have those three, and our entire team, our entire team just tends to get better and better. That being said, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session, please.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion by Ms. Samms, and a second by Ms. Crawford. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes.